This is a WGNS Action Line, talking with Rutherford County newsmakers about what matters most to you. Now your host, Scott Walker.
You're listening to WGNS and this morning we have a political forum on the air and this is a political forum for those running or incumbents for the city council of Murfreesboro. We will start off this segment of the show with each candidate just going around and briefly introducing yourself and talking about why you're running or why you're currently in city council and want to maintain that seat. I guess let's start off with Vice Mayor Bill Shacklet.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, WGNS, for having the forum. Good to see my colleagues and running folks that are running with us. I'm a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro, raised in Murfreesboro City Schools. Went to Murfreesboro Central back in 69 when I graduated and then MTSU and got a degree in urban planning. Just really appreciate the opportunity to run again and to serve the people of a community that I love dearly and the relationship that we can establish between the government and the people it serves. And just thank you for this opportunity.
Good morning, Scott. Thank you for having us this morning. My name's Councilman Kurt Wade. Just glad to be here. And the reason I'm running is I have a passion for the city of Murfreesboro. I've been involved with this city for the last 10 to 15 years. I had the opportunity to sit on planning commission eight years prior to sitting on city council. And we've done an excellent job of maintaining the growth of this city and I want to continue to be part of this movement that we're doing. To do that, we have to have good people and good qualified people to understand what government is all about. And that's why I'm running.
Thanks, Scott. And WGNS for putting this together. My name's Sean Wright and I'm running for reelection to the city council. I'm a Murfreesboro lifelong resident. My family's been around for seven generations in Murfreesboro. And just like Mr. Shacklet, I was raised in Murfreesboro City Schools, K through eight, Mitchell Nelson, Casey Lane. Graduated from Oakland High School, went to MTSU for a business management degree and a business admin degree in economics and finance. Got an MBA from the University of Memphis in finance and some post grad stuff from UT in supply chain management and lean process management. I think my business experience and educational experience works just great serving the city of Murfreesboro and I look forward to serving the people of Murfreesboro who are the best part of our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Northcutt. I've lived in Murfreesboro for 26 years. I'm an MTSU graduate. I moved back here to raise my three children. I love Murfreesboro, fell in love with it when I was a student here. I have business experience as a people manager, budget manager, and a project manager and quality control. I've always brought a personal level of excellence to any job that I've had and sought to make it better, more efficient, and more cheaply run. And that's what I want to bring to Murfreesboro. I've always felt strongly that it's almost a requirement for me to give back to my community. I've done that through nonprofits and I'd like to be the voice for citizens of Murfreesboro.
Good morning. My name is Matt Harriman. Scott, thank you for hosting this and to those listening this morning. I'm a lifelong Tennessean. I grew up in the western part of the state, went to school in the eastern part of the state, and I've lived in middle Tennessee for about 12 to 15 years roughly. Married to my wife, Morgan. We've got three beautiful kiddos, Judah, Isaiah, and Nora. They're seven, five, and three. My wife is a lifelong resident here. I've spent my life kind of at the intersection of education policy, real estate, and ministry. I had the honor of serving alongside our governor, Bill Lee, who has endorsed my campaign. And I've gained a unique perspective of how state government and local governments can work together for the good of the citizens that they serve. And so that's why I'm running. I think I've got a unique background that equips me to lead and to govern and to make decisions. And I'm excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
And again, you just heard from all the candidates who are running for Murfreesboro City Council. We will just start asking just a series of questions and whoever would like to answer the question or come back with an answer, step up to any of the microphones and reintroduce yourself. That way folks listening can know exactly who is responding to the question. We will start off with a question of impact fees. As all of you know, a new impact fee was implemented and went into effect last year around this time. In fact, it went into effect, I believe, July 1st of 2023. Now that we are a year into it, we are seeing that first increase in the cost per square foot for residential construction. That cost is going to go up again next year. And then there are also costs involved with the new construction of apartments, retail construction, new office construction, pretty much all construction in general. What are your thoughts on that impact fee? And is there anything that you would like to see changed with that impact fee? In general, what are your thoughts on it?
Hi, this is Kelly Northcutt. I applauded the passing of the impact fee. I believe that that kind of spreads the burden of our growth and development across the people that are making money from the development and doesn't put the burden on the people that have already been living here through our tax base. So I think that's a proper place to put some of that, that burden is on development. But also, there was a study recently done at the request of State Representative that TASSER released a state agency that found that the impact of the impact fee, that's a little confusing. Yeah, the impact of the impact fee on housing prices was only 1% or less. So I don't think it's going to have a huge impact on the cost of housing. But what does have a larger impact on the cost of housing is only building single family dwellings that that reduces the density of housing and the lack of more affordable housing makes the prices much higher than the impact fee will.
Anybody else like to comment on the impact fees here in Murfreesboro?
This is Bill Shacklet. It's been a long time coming. You know, we've had this discussion for several years as to how to pass the burden of the cost of infrastructure from existing property owners to new property owners and getting to this point where we actually recover those costs. And this particular bill that we passed, ordinance that we passed, basically directs those funds to particular areas of need, schools and roads and amenities like parks. And it was a long time coming to get to this point. But this is just a part of that puzzle of creating a more affordable housing market in our communities. And part of that, the other part of that is raising salaries and income levels of the individuals that can afford those homes. So I think we've done a part of it, but this is just a piece of the puzzle and we have to continue to do and we can always do a little bit better.
This is Sean Wright. I ran four years ago on implementing impact fees and I was one of the main pushers of it last year. This isn't a full recovery. Growth does not pay for itself with impact fees, but it goes a long way. Those four buckets that Mr. Shacklet was talking about, parks, roads, schools, and public safety, a new school costs $60 million. So with these impact fees, they go a long way at helping build that next school. Police, the police headquarters cost nearly $55 million. That would have gone a long way to pay for that police headquarters. Parks, parks are expensive. And roads, we spent $100 million the last four years doing road projects across the city. So with these new impact fees, we can go a long way. We may have to spend another $100 million the next four years. As far as affordability goes, like Mr. Shacklet goes, we have to bring those jobs in that are high paying jobs that people can afford to live here. That way they can afford to own here, rent here, and live here for the near future.
This is Matt Harriman. I've talked about with folks, the ABCs for Murfreesboro, which is achieve in education, believe in public safety, and commit to infrastructure. And as the others have touched on, the impact fees have an impact, no pun intended, on all of those issues. When I'm out talking to people in the community, the chief thing that they're concerned with is growth and how we manage that and how we handle that from a city perspective. And so these impact fees go along in helping us manage those things. And I think are important part of that, as Mr. Shacklet alluded to, the broader puzzle, because it is a puzzle, putting all of these pieces together on how we continue to help our city prosper and improve the quality of life of those who live here.
And again, we're talking to those running for Murfreesboro City Council. And would anybody else like to comment on that impact fee?
This is Kurt Wade. I think one of the most important things that we've done is just like Sean and Bill had said, is implementing this fee, but yet understanding how it's distributed out to our community and how it helps our school system. Because one of the key things is this, we're going to have to build another school and we're going to have to be able to pay for it. With the cost doubling and tripling, we need to make sure that we have funds set aside to make sure those schools are being paid for.
Moving to the next question here, it deals with educators and also first responders. I'm sure as many of you probably believe, it's important for first responders and teachers to live in the community in which they work day in and day out. But I know a lot of people talk about that cost of living and impact fees. That's one of those aspects that people have to look at when, let's say, building a new home in Murfreesboro. Are there ways that you think we can, I don't know, better hire future educators or police officers or firemen and then keep them here in Murfreesboro where they are working? Or maybe there are incentive ideas. I know some cities are coming out with incentive plans for firemen, for teachers. In one state, they even have residential living areas for teachers in certain cities. And that's being offered at a low cost to educators whenever they come on to the job as a teacher. What are some thoughts you may have on making sure that these teachers, these first responders are actually able to live in Murfreesboro?
Hi, this is Kelly Northcutt. I believe part of the puzzle in that is to make sure that we offer them a living wage to begin with. I know the starting wage for police officers was just increased. I believe the plan is to increase the starting wage for firefighters and EMTs. And I think that that's a necessary part of it. Recruiting people, a lot of that comes with either, you know, bonuses or good pay and good benefits. We need to, we need to make sure that those are comparable to other cities. We're losing a lot of firefighters that we train to Franklin and Nashville. And some of that is the cost of living here. We need to make sure that with a higher density building with kind of creative solutions to lower the housing costs and keep the rent and mortgage prices from rising, that we make it an affordable place for them to live. But we also have to recruit and retain people by making sure that they get good compensation and good benefits and a working environment that they feel supports them.
Anybody else?
This is Matt Harriman. I would say, when it comes to the education side, obviously the role of city council is simply funding the school system. But I think we need to look at that as a partnership with the city school board and understanding what their needs are and how, how can we as a council further support teacher salaries. I know there, there is a component of how the funding works with the new TESA funding that's in place. There's still a local match component of that. And so is there a way for us as a city council to up that local match in order to ensure that teachers are getting paid fairly? And then similarly with our public safety officials, is sitting down with them and understanding their needs. And I think it starts with making sure they know and understand that we support them and we're for them. And when we want the best and the brightest to stay here and live here and to be part of our community. And so how can we do that by supporting them, you know, financially?
Bill Shacklet. Well, one of the more innovative projects that came before council recently provided a component that I haven't seen in its development plan where it had reduced, basically, if you bought it, you had a reduced rate, or if you rented in that facility, you got a reduced rate as a hometown heroes. Is that what they call them? Hometown heroes component. And that included our first responders. But, you know, the issue is, I served on the school board as the liaison with the council. And what I'm finding out when I listen to them through their discussion budget process, is that we're in an arms race with local communities, not only for first responders, police and fire, but, but for teachers. You know, getting good quality people to meet daily with our children and to do that kind of job and be adequately paid is going to be a challenge. And so we have to continue those discussions and they begin when we basically know the problem. I think we faced in our budget this year, we faced and addressed the police issue. We're about to address, I think, our fire issue with restructuring their pay plan. Our teachers have got a significant raise this year as well. But, you know, it's one of those ongoing, it's a moving target. We have to be able to be flexible, but stay engaged in the conversations with what is happening on the ground with those people and then interchange and make decisions as we're going through that process. And like I say, we can always do better.
Yeah, this is Kurt Wade. I think one of the things that we've tried to do as a council is to be competitive with other local cities around here, especially when it comes to emergency service. And just like Bill had stated before, we just introduced the Broad Street Project where we're giving teachers and firefighters a discount on their rate to live in that facility. So I think we're addressing some of the needs. Also, each year, we've got to be competitive compared to other local cities that are around here. I mean, we have increased the salaries of emergency service over 15% in the last two to three years, just trying to be competitive and making sure that we don't have consistent turnover with our fire department and with our firefighters. So I think we're addressing those needs, but we can, we have to continue to look at it, make sure it fits in with our budget to make sure that we keep our good people in Murfreesboro.
This is Sean Wright. As the husband of a teacher, I, I can feel this probably better than anybody up here because I live it. If something was to happen to me, there's no way my wife could afford to live in Murfreesboro with four children. So I understand exactly this, this issue. Like Mr. Shacklet said, the past four years has been an arms race, not only for public safety, but for teacher pay as well. And we've been actively, the city school board's been active with the school pay, and we've been active as far as public safety goes. In the past four years, police have received 42% on average raises over the past four years. And fire right now is at 36%. And we're working on a restructuring plan as of right now that will take it over that. So we're trying to be at the precipice of these pay increases to help these individuals be able to live, work, and play in Murfreesboro. Like Mr. Shacklet and Mr. Wade said, the Keystone Project had an affordability aspect for hometowns heroes. And there's an FHA mortgage plan for hometown heroes also that gets a lower interest rate and a down payment assistance when they want to buy a property, not necessarily just Keystone, but any property. So it's something we need to work towards and make sure people are aware that those programs exist. That way they can afford to live, play, and stay here.
And again, you're listening to a political forum for those running for Murfreesboro City Council. And would anybody else like to comment on that? Next question here, this one's texted to us. It says that they believe that 90% of Murfreesboro City employees this year received a 4% pay raise while police and fire were awarded a 10% pay raise plus an additional 5% coming in August. It says, what will you do to treat all Murfreesboro City employees equal with an equal pay scale for all city employees?
Well, tough question because it's, it's like so many things. Once you raise somebody's salary, everybody's thinking that they, you know, deserve more. The issue is that I think I can hang my hat on. Somebody had asked me about, what are your priorities? Well, you look at the budget and significant dollars in our budget is, is directed towards our employees, towards the people that provide the services to our community. And we're always looking at that. We're willing to get more information, continue to dialogue with the people that are, you know, in the midst of the process. And, but I think the issue is we do value our employees. I think you can look around at the turnover rate in, in our administration particularly is, is very low. So we've got to continue to work on it, continue to try to build trust, but continue to communicate to us as we move forward in this process. Because quite honestly, we don't know what the economy, some of the reasons that we face those issues of getting behind in the curve is because the last two or three years, and this is a little thing called COVID that's happened that affected dramatically our economy for a significant number of years. So now we're trying to recover that and we have some ground to make up, but it's a process. And I think we as a council, I think have committed ourselves to the process of valuing those people that work for the city.
I don't know that you can consider all positions equal and have the same equal pay scale across, you know, every department out there. But would anybody else like to respond to that question?
Yeah, Scott, this is Kurt Wade. It's a balancing act and that's what we do on a daily basis. And, you know, we can't talk about, what we can talk about is this, we did, we did give police a pay raise. We're working in the progress right now to make sure that we take care of firefighters. Can't say what we're going to do, but we, we are working right now as we speak to make sure that we take care of firefighters. But we're not only just trying to take care of emergency service providers, we want to make sure that we can take care of all our employees for the city of Murfreesboro.
Sean Wright, I agree with my compadres over here. We, we are continually studying all of our city employees. We, we love our city employees, want to take good care of them. We want to make sure we are a pleasant place to work and everybody feels that they're taken care of. And like Mr. Walker said, and Kurt and Bill both said, you can't judge all, all bases equally. You read the newspaper, you watch the news. There's definitely a group of people that are pushing for there not to be police officers and pushing for people not to, to love and cherish police officers. So it makes it where they have to pay more to keep them engaged. Firemen, both police and fire are, are walking to a job every day that they may not come home to at night. So they kind of, you can't really judge them equally, but we're always studying everybody's pay. I was in a meeting yesterday with our new city manager, talking about this very issue across the whole board, not just police, fire, but everyone. And so we're continually studying this.
This is Matt Harriman. I think to your point, Scott, and somewhat to Sean's as well, is public safety, in my mind, is the foundation of a community that, that's thriving. Whether it's, it's good or, or bad is whether or not that community is, is thriving. And, and if you prioritize that, I believe you're going to have a community that does thrive. If you have a community that, that people don't feel safe or welcome, that translates over into attracting jobs and a good education system. There's so many, there's such a domino effect for a community that people no longer feel safe in. And so I think the city has prioritized police and fire, and I think rightfully so. And I think we need to continue to look at ways to prioritize public safety as well.
This is Kelly Northcutt. I think as Mr. Shacklet said, it's very easy to, to look at something and, you know, someone gets a percentage raise and you think I should get the same. And, you know, if you're looking at just dealing with things equally, that would probably be the right solution to come up with. But there's a difference between dealing with things fairly and dealing with things equally. And sometimes if you look at comparables for other cities of the same size and other positions, if one section of employees is already getting pretty much a market comparable pay, and then you find that, for instance, your firefighters aren't, then you would look at putting a higher percentage raise to the people that aren't making a comparable salary. And it's also sometimes a supply and demand. Not that we devalue any jobs in the city, but if, if we're paying and investing in training emergency workers and they're, then they're leaving for cities that offer higher pay, we need to invest, to maintain our investment, to keep the firefighters that give us a great ISO rating and make us a safe city. So sometimes doing things that are fair won't seem equal, but it comes out to be a much more fair playing field across the board.
And again, you're listening to a Murfreesboro City Council political forum this morning. And we are taking questions that are texted in or questions that were previously emailed to us. And you can text any questions in to 615-893-1450. And we'll try to get to your question. For right now, we're going to take a short break and then we'll be right back.
The Action Line on FM 101.9 and AM 1450, Murfreesboro, FM 100.5 Smyrna. Listen and watch at WGNSradio.com.
When unexpected happens, fire, water, or storm damage, Fair Construction can help. Fair Construction is also there to help when a car slams through the wall. And that seems to happen more often these days. I'm Ron Hall. Let our family at Fair Construction help you. Call Fair Construction and we'll board up, put down tarp, secure your home or business until the insurance coverage is approved. I'm Ron Hall. Shop local. Let our family business help you. Fair Construction Company.
WGNS is powered by Middle Tennessee Electric, who offers energy-saving tips during the hot summer months. Change your HVAC filter once a month for more efficient operation. For more tips, go to MTE.com/MyEnergyPlan.
Hey, this is Dan with Music World and Drummers Den. Come in for your guitars, keyboards, drums. We have you covered. Our prices will normally meet internet prices. We also have PA and DJ equipment. Some lights, yes, we have that covered too. You can come rent a PA and sound system, do your karaoke and bring it back. Come see us at Music World and Drummers Den. The one stop shop where you have everything that you might need. 2762 South Church Street, right across from the golf course.
By growing up in the restaurant business and being always around it, it was just something that was just second nature to me. I didn't realize the amount of work that was involved in it. I didn't understand and appreciate all that my parents sacrificed in order to provide for us. And now I'm very thankful and I'm very appreciative of the foundation that they laid for me so we could teach others to create what they have done to make it more of a legacy than just a passing of the torch.
This is Peter Demus, inviting you to enjoy a meal with our family at Demus's Restaurant.
CapStar is now a division of Old National Bank. You'll notice some changes as we complete the transition to Old National Bank. The Murfreesboro team that you know and trust at CapStar are always ready to serve you. We'll temporarily use CapStar Bank, a division of Old National Bank, until the transition's complete. As always, we're ready to serve you at CapStar Bank, a division of Old National Bank, number FDIC.
The Action Line on FM 101.9 and AM 1450, Murfreesboro, FM 100.5 Smyrna. Listen and watch at WGNSradio.com.
You're listening to WGNS and right now we are holding a political forum for those running for Murfreesboro City Council. And if you have any questions, all you have to do is text those in to us at 615-893-1450. Again, 615-893-1450. This next question says, what would you change about the city of Murfreesboro if you had the ability to make that change, no matter what that change actually is? But if you could literally change anything here in Murfreesboro, what would that change be?
This is Bill Shacklet. And I'll, I'll try to attempt to answer this because I'd say not much, but, but there is something. You know, there's always room for improvement. You know, I've lived here all my life. It's looked different in different stages of it. But I think appreciating the time that you're living and realizing that there's things to work on. It's on your own life, you know, look in the mirror and see what could be better. The one thing that I think we have an opportunity in our community to change is quite honestly, the politics and how politics happen. And I applaud my colleagues and the people that have run, that are running for office now. We can clean up the way politics happens to where we can respectfully dialogue, have an opportunity to find, appreciate each other's contribution in that process, value the diversity of opinions that we have in our community. I think I'd like to see that. I'd like to see people being able to engage in each, with each other in a respectful manner that can really try to find answers as opposed to just staying in our huddles and our own little tribe with people that think like us and converse like us, and yet we never move anything forward. We have an opportunity to do that here in our town, and I'd love to see that.
Kurt Wade here. I think one of the best things about Murfreesboro, we still have that small town feel. It's a great place to live, work, and play. And that's what we strive for, for the last couple of years. And one of the main things I think that we get calls about on a daily basis is traffic. If we could do one thing, if we could get our state workers to understand as fast as we're growing, if we could get our state roads to be developed quicker, that would be a plus to our city. And I think us working along with our local government and trying to make sure that it doesn't take 10 to 15 years to get Highway 99 widened, doesn't take 20 years to get Thompson Lane widened. That's one of the biggest complaints I think I hear about Murfreesboro, because we've got a great city that we live in. We want our kids to live here. We want them to graduate from college. We want them to stay here. We want all those kids to go to MTSU. We want them to stay here. They'll stay here as long as we continue to bring good jobs, quality jobs, and a quality way of living here in the city.
Yeah, this is Kelly Northcutt. I think knocking on doors, the biggest thing that people would like to change is traffic. And not just traffic on the major thoroughfares, even though, you know, it takes an hour to get from Murfreesboro to Murfreesboro. But the traffic and the effects it has in the, in the neighborhoods, people speeding down the streets. I think there's a lot we can do to maybe mitigate the, the dangerous aspect of traffic on the side streets and in our, in our neighborhoods. And it's really tempting. There's a lot I love about Murfreesboro. It's a wonderful place to live and it's tempting to want things to stay the same. But the growth that we have can be a benefit as long as we channel it in the right direction. And I think the biggest challenge in doing that is the traffic that comes with the growth. And I think that it takes, it takes a lot of different opinions and a lot of people pulling together to make sure that we maintain our wonderful city and quality of life while we do that.
Matt Harriman here. You know, I, I think they've hit the nail on the head at this, at this point around traffic. I think what the governor and his team have tried to do from T-DOT perspective is really look at how they can run it more like a business because they too are tired of things taking eight, 10, 15, 20 years to happen. And so I know they have looked a lot of how the private sector can help solve that problem. And I think because of my relationships there, you know, I look forward to being able to use those to the benefit of the city because five of our main roads in our community are state roads. And it, it really does take a partnership with the state to get those things done. But what I would say too is, we do live in a great community. I grew up in a really small town in West Tennessee. And let me tell you, those people would give an arm and a leg to be presented with the challenges that we have. And really, I would, I would turn that around and say they're, they're really opportunities. The people, so many people want to talk about problems and issues and kind of live in the negative. But I think if we really take a step back and look at what those problems and issues are, we're really blessed to have those challenges and opportunities to roll up our sleeves and work together and to solve those challenges together. So I just wanted to point that out.
Sean Wright, as someone born and raised here like Mr. Shacklet, I've seen the city grow. When I graduated high school, this city only had 38,000 people and now it's mid 160s. So I've seen the growth. I've seen the, being able to drive from one side of Murfreesboro to the other in 10, 12, 15 minutes. And now, like Ms. Northcutt said, it may take you 45 minutes to an hour. So I've seen that, that growth in traffic. The last four years, like I'd said in a prior answer, we spent $100 million on road projects. Now the citizens of Murfreesboro don't see the benefits of those until the orange barrels come up. But we gave seed- we gave seed money to the state to get Old Fort Parkway, Memorial Boulevard, Highway 96, going towards Las Casas, all widened. We've approved Medical Center Parkway to be six or seven lanes. And we're working to get those infrastructure needs fixed, and we're trying to continue working on that. Like Mr. Harriman said, there's a lot of people that like to thrive in the negative. But let me tell you this, when I was growing up here, everybody goes, man, I wish I didn't have to go to Nashville or Franklin to do everything. And now, here we are, 25 years since I graduated, and we don't ever have to leave Murfreesboro to do anything. We've got everything. The doctors are here, the shopping's here, the restaurants are here, which we didn't have 25 years ago. So now we just got to get the infrastructure fixed to serve the needs of the community, and we're working on that. We need our state delegation to step up to the table and actually work with the state to get us those state projects, instead of them all going to Williamson and Davidson Counties.
And this next question goes back to the impact fee. It says, while apartments may not necessarily be what most people like, they do serve a purpose. And that new impact fee taxes developers approximately $1.5 million just to build a 200-unit apartment complex. That does not seem fair. What are your thoughts?
This is Sean Wright. Look, everybody has lived in an apartment at some point, and everybody probably will at some point. So apartments are a needed part of society, but we have to have a healthy housing mix. If you look at thriving communities in the country, apartments usually serve about 25% of the community of residential doors. We're upwards of 36% of residential doors are apartments. That's not a healthy mix. So when we work towards going to the future and looking what a healthy mix looks like, especially in an economic downturn, when you have a high number of residential rental units in an economic downturn, those people go where jobs are. So we have to work towards getting our housing mix more healthy, because in a downward economy, those healthy housing mixes actually make those communities stronger. So as we work towards the future, look, apartments are a major drain on taxpayers also. The amount of kids that are in those apartments, the amount of services those apartments need, those apartments cost more money to do than a 200-unit housing complex also.
This is Kelly Northcutt. While our apartment percentage is higher than in a normal, I guess, healthy community, a lot of what we're missing is the middle housing, not high-end housing that people are priced out of, but middle-range housing that people can afford to buy into to move out of apartments. So while our apartments, it seems like there's a lot of them, I think they're at over 90% occupancy, which is really high. That means that we have a lot more demand for rental units than we have supply, and that makes the cost artificially high as well. So what that does is, it puts more of a burden on people who might otherwise move into lower-end purchased homes, but that supply isn't there. So they can't afford to save up to move into those homes. So it becomes a domino effect that creates more pressure for the rental units. And what we need to do is focus on ways to have higher-density purchased homes in the middle range, so that people can afford starter homes, so that people can afford to move out of apartments, and free up those units, so that people who are students or single working people can afford those, and the rent prices won't keep rising. So that middle range is where we need to focus in order to keep it affordable to live here, and in order to reduce the number of apartments that we need to continuously build.
Anybody else like to take a stab at that one?
Hey, this is Kurt Wade. Just like Sean said, and I think what we've tried to do is find a balance. And the balance is, we can't be saturated with too many apartments. You also have to have the apartments in the right location. If you look at any growing city, if you look at Chattanooga downtown, they've got a mix. If you look at Nashville downtown, they've got a mix. That's what we've got to do here, too. Even if you look at Franklin, if you look out in the suburbs of Franklin, they've got a mix of apartments and houses together. If you go anywhere down Mallory Lane, anywhere near the shopping center, they've got a mix. And I think that's what we're trying to find here is a balance in making sure we got that mix that blends in with the city.
This is Matt Harriman. I mean, obviously, all this goes back to affordability and the reason people rent versus buy and that sort of thing, which others have touched on. I think reality is, is we, as a council, can't fix the problem. I mean, we're not going to fix the affordability crisis. I mean, that's something that takes a national, state, and even local problem solving. But I do think our role as council is to attract high-quality, high-paying jobs to Murfreesboro. And I think, just like we don't like seeing road money go to Williamson County or Davidson County or Wilson County, I don't like seeing the high-paying jobs always go to Franklin or Nashville. I think we've got a great community, and I think we can compete for those high-paying, high-quality jobs. And so I think that's one of the things that council can do to help in the affordability crisis.
Bill Shacklet, the one thing they're not making any more of, land. And that's what causes us to deal with issues that we have here in our community. So it's a problem of density. And there are people that, we talk about affordability, surely apartment is sometimes a gateway to homeownership, hopefully, but not everybody wants homeownership. So I think the compelling thing that we have to do is to realize that there's competing interests that are happening, developers, property owners, the citizens, existing property owners. There's all these competing interests that have a voice and need to be at the table as we're making some of these decisions. I think of our impact fee and how the impact it is on developers. It's almost like that game, the pop-up thing, where you push one down and another one comes up. That's kind of the way this process has happened. And the delivery process, to have that transparent, inclusive, to have that process be productive in the long run, is going to involve everybody at the table and having those discussions so that we understand this vote has this impact on this group, this vote has impact on this group. And to balance those to where we do the best we can to be fair and impartial in making those decisions, and what is in the long-term best interest of our community. Because sometimes, when you just silo your thinking into one direction, it looks like, oh, that's not fair. So you have to think about the impact on that decision on the entire community. Because quite honestly, in a growing community, it's not just the growth that's happening in our community, it's how fast that growth is taking place in Murfreesboro. So we need to engage everybody at the table and have a transparent discussion as to what is the best decision going forward. And then I think we'll make the right decision.
Let me say one thing, and I think you guys, everybody standing up here, will agree with me. Everybody thinks council controls affordable housing. We do not. The affordable housing is dictated by the economy and what's going on in our county. And we can ask anybody, what is affordable housing? Because it's different in every state, and it's different in every city. If you go to West Tennessee from where I'm from, you might get a different version of what you get from Middle Tennessee or East Tennessee. So when we talk about affordable housing, we need to be careful when we say, what is affordable housing? Affordable housing could be $500,000 in Williamson County. It could be $300,000 here. So when we start talking about affordable housing, what we do as a council, try to look at ways to make sure that we bring good housing to Murfreesboro. We don't dictate what affordable housing is. Now, do we try to get affordable housing? Yes. We're always looking for developers to come in to do something different and to work a way where we can have affordable housing. But we have to be careful when we talk about what affordable housing is.
Sean Wright, I've got one more thing to add on affordable housing also. As somebody who studies the housing market on a daily basis, the number-one threat to affordable housing is these real estate investment trusts that are buying every single house under $500,000 and turning them into rental properties. It artificially increases the sales price of that property, and then they have to have a rental price that correlates with the sales price of that property. So those real estate investment trusts who are buying what everybody used to call starter homes, it makes every single housing aspect higher. It brings the pricing of everything, the rental pricing up, the sales prices up, and it makes it where those people can afford that starter house, that traditionally, you got your biggest growth in wealth between your first house and second house, and these people are no longer having that aspect of life as buying that starter home. That's the number-one threat, and only the people in Washington can take care of that.
This is Kelly Northcutt. I agree that we can't solve the economy. It's a global thing. It's a national thing. But there are steps that we can take to mitigate some of those rising costs. And some of that is to look at zoning, perhaps change to allow more dense building, duplexes, triplexes, cottage courts, ADUs, where somebody takes their garage out back and turns it into a rental unit, that both mixes it into a community instead of just a huge footprint of apartments, and increases our density. And that's one of the things that we can do as a council. We can also look at limiting the short-term rentals and people coming in to buy them, as Sean was talking about. But there are things like changing zoning laws for setbacks and ADUs and increasing density mixed in with the rest of our city to make the higher-density units available, and that will lower the price because the demand won't outpace the supply.
And again, you've been listening to a political forum for those running for Murfreesboro City Council. We have enough time for each person to say, maybe use about 20 seconds to close with. Very short time, but whoever would like to go first on the closing, feel free.
Matt Harriman here. Again, I'm running with the ABCs of Murfreesboro in mind. Achieve in education, believe in public safety, and commit to infrastructure. I believe my unique background and my youth and my energy is something that the council's missing, and I look forward to being able to serve on the council.
Hi, this is Kelly Northcutt. My main motivation in running for city council is coming from a perspective of a regular working person that's lived here and loves this city. I want to be a voice for regular people. I don't have any interest in the growth or development of this, other than making it a good city to stay in and live in. That's what I want to offer people, is to be a listening ear, to listen to their concerns and address their concerns and be their voice on the city council.
Sean Wright, like I've said, I'm a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro. I'm one of you. I'm serving because the best part of Murfreesboro is the people. And as the part of the best part of Murfreesboro being the people, I'm here to listen to the people and serve the people and hear the people. Thank you. I appreciate your vote.
Hi, I'm Kurt Wade. I just want to say, I want your vote. I'm asking for your vote. But most of all, I love Murfreesboro and how this city's grown, and I've been a part of this for the last 15 to 20 years. I want to continue to be a part of this great city.
Bill Shacklet, thank you so much for this opportunity. The one thing I value in this process of running for election is the fact that we talk about our ideas and dreams for our community, but the important part of that whole process is you as voters. I hope today's been enlightening to you. I hope this has given you some clarity as to who you're going to vote for. Early voting begins on the 12th through 27th, and Election Day is August the 1st. Appreciate serving you as a city councilman from 2002 to 2006, and then re-elected again in 2014 to now. Appreciate and would love to continue to serve our community, the community that I love.
For WGNS, I'm Scott Walker, and this has been a political forum for those running for Murfreesboro City Council. Our guests today have included incumbents, Murfreesboro Vice Mayor Bill Shacklet, Murfreesboro Councilman Kurt Wade, and Murfreesboro Councilman Sean Wright. Also running, Matt Harriman and Kelly Northcutt, who are also in studio today. And that's going to wrap up today's broadcast out of the Middle Tennessee Electric Studios. Middle Tennessee Electric, serving to make life better since 1936.
The Action Line on FM 101.9 and AM 1450 Murfreesboro, FM 100.5 Smyrna. Listen and watch at WGNSradio.com.
The best things in life, they come in twos. Two scoops of ice cream, two tacos. And now, for a limited time, get our best deal of the year. Buy any phone when you switch to Consumer Cellular and get two months of service free. That's right, the same fast, reliable nationwide coverage as big wireless, now with two months free. Proof the best things in life really do come in twos. Visit consumercellular.com or call 1-888-FREEDOM. Second and third month of monthly-based service fee waived for new customers with the purchase of a phone and activation by July 31, 2024. Taxes, fees, and third-party charges will apply. See website for additional details.